I will call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the San Clemente Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission on August 29, 2023, and we will start with roll call. Commissioner Ambrose.
Here.
Commissioner Dow.
Here.
Commissioner Elliott.
Present.
Commissioner Foremaster.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Chair Proten Kuesken.
Here.
And Chair Fire Stines here as well. And I'm sorry. Pledge of Allegiance. Let's start now with that. Commissioner Ambrose, would you please just give us a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with righteousness for all.
We have two items on our agenda tonight. And I guess I'm wondering if anybody else would be interested in doing the item B first? Because I think we could probably.
I think that's why these folks are here.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
I would like to move to adjust the agenda to put B in front of A, which is the pickleball issue.
Yes, yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Motion by Kuesken, second by Foremaster. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's see. Second consideration of design review of pickleball facility at Richard T. Steve Memorial Park. Do you have a staff report?
I do. And I'm going to hand you a couple of comment cards as well. There you go. Okay. Okay. Let's see if it comes on. So while we are waiting for this to come onto the screen, this is an item returning to the commission this evening regarding the second consideration of the design of the pickleball facility at Steve Park. The commission, as you'll remember and note, that it previously considered the design at its August meeting and gave some direction to staff to clarify what would happen to the dog park, the sand volleyball courts, as well as the soccer field, and the other elements surrounding the future pickleball development. So tonight, I'm happy to tell you that nothing fell off the plan. It was never intended to. So the consideration of design of 24 courts is all that the commission's focused on. The sand volleyball courts that were originally proposed remain in the design, as does the dog park, as does the multipurpose field, and some of those more passive outdoor recreation spaces. Again, the design, as we reiterated at our last meeting, the design of and the selection of a concept plan for pickleball doesn't immediately guarantee funding. It just allows us to now look at how we phase out the development of this project. And I'm going to pause and see if I can have my tech person turn the screens on so you guys can have some visuals.
Yeah, it's not coming through. It's, I think it's supposed to be on the computer and it, I don't know. I can look at it. Because it's supposed to show up on my end and it wasn't.
Uh, you better than I.
I'll go check. But yeah, no, it's on my end, so I'm so sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. So while we're waiting for that to come online, the slide that I prepared is actually just a blown-up version of what is in the packet. So this, if you'll look at your item 1B, attachment 2, provides the conceptual plan of what, you know, 24 courts would look like expanded within the footprint of Steve Park. That includes the expanded parking lot with the additional 165 parking spaces. It also includes four sand volleyball courts, the off-leash dog park, the youth multipurpose field, and some passive recreation spaces. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions if there are any. But again, the goal tonight is to look at version A, B, and C of the 24 pickleball court design and advise on what is the best layout to go forward.
So question, so your study since the last meeting was that all those things that kind of move up into that other area there to the far right and upper corner? And what really, the only real impact is to that kind of multipurpose field get smaller to be able to accommodate this.
That's correct, yes.
And then the difference between A, B, and C, besides the arrangement, it also, there was a difference in the amount of additional parking that was created where A was considerably different than B and C?
Yeah, so A had less parking within the expansion, and that's why staff's recommendation is C because it actually provides even more parking than is recommended. It's an additional 65 spaces.
I want to compliment the staff. I really appreciate having this picture that is much larger, that incorporates all the amenities so we can see where the pickleball courts are going to be in proportion to the other features of the park. So this is exactly what I was hoping to see. Thank you.
Samantha, I have a question.
I have a question.
Was there ever an overwhelming need or desire expressed for a field of the size as it was originally designed?
No, it was really just that it seemed to be what fit there. It was a multipurpose field, never intended to be specifically soccer, but there's certainly enough field sports that can use a large expansive field of that nature, whether that's football or rugby or lacrosse. Any type of field sport could use that space. That's why it was designed to be so big. But the original concept plan designed these spaces and pods that were meant to be a little bit more flexible and grow with whatever need had arose from time to time. So what's proposed and with adding additional 8 courts, so 24 courts total, it would be about a, I want to say, a U-10 field. You could probably fit that in that space. It still would be very well utilized and certainly would fill a need that we certainly see still in San Clemente.
Can you remind us why staffs prefer C over B?
Sure. The biggest component is parking. Additional parking with the addition of eight more courts serves to benefit the entire park in itself. But also the, I thought it was going to come online. The layout of the, what I'll call the restroom and kind of operations facility towards the front of the parking lot and in that entrance, so that's number five, six, and seven on your site plan of attachment 2. It is a little bit more easily accessible from the parking lot and allows for a better flow into the entire pickleball area. It also places the kind of center court component right at the front and allows for some better seating in that area as well. It also locates a restroom a little bit more central to the farther away courts in that vicinity as well. So that's the preference for that. Version B, the really only difference between B and C is the location of that second restroom. The second restroom in B is located against the hillside, and staff believe that pushing it closer towards the middle of the courts, it would be more conducive for access.
I have a question.
Yeah, Susan.
Does the, does the label Ops building take the place of the shop that you had in there before?
Yes, that's a great question. That is a working term. I understand from our previous commission, the pro-shop term caused concern, and I want to reiterate that it's a 650-square-foot building and half of it will be a restroom. So when you really look at what a pro-shop is, that's maybe 300 square feet. So the most that could happen out of there is a staff office that allows for somebody to come in and potentially pay for a court if we're doing court reservations or, you know, whatever could happen. And it's similar to what we have at the aquatic center where you have a front desk, there's customer service staff there that are there to help facilitate the operations of the facility. So we've transposed that into an operations facility, for lack of a better term, really.
No, I think that is a better term. So thank you for making that change.
Oh, yeah, I have a question. So from our, oh, sorry. So from our perspective, what's going to be considered at the planning commission, I just want to clarify that a little bit, will be parking. And then at that stage, the fire department will review emergency access through the various paths and so forth and so on, right? So all of those sort of practical matters, you know, the number of toilet units and all that stuff will be done at the planning commission level.
That's correct.
So specifically, just to focus for us, what are we here to basically review and recommend? Or is it just the layout of the courts, number of the courts?
Yes, that's the goal for tonight. Which version, A, B, and C, do you prefer? Obviously, the big difference between A and the other two is the number of parking stalls. But the goal for the commission is just to look at the layout. What works best to service what is potentially a pickleball space and what the pickleball players would find conducive to their use as well. Anything else? Traffic, access, fire access, all of that, that is reviewed by the planning commission? And this, because Steve Park is within the Ranch of San Clemente specific plan, that it's going to fall under those guidelines within planning. And so it's very likely that any additional parking increase would require another look by planning. And if that's the case, that would come after this BBR commission review.
Samantha, I wanted to ask if there has been any activity regarding the environmental review since we've looked at this last? If there's an idea of what would need to happen with that since it was done on the previous version of the plan?
Yes, so the, you know, we've adopted a mitigated negative declaration, the MND, and that would allow us to, essentially adding additional eight courts and expanding parking of any sort. It's likely that we could just do an amendment to the MND, and that would be handled through planning as well. Planning handles all of our environmental components, and that would go, I'm not sure of the timeline, but certainly we would be looking at that ahead of coming to council for any formal decision.
Okay. Any other questions? Samantha? Yes, Susan?
I have another question. Samantha, when I'm looking at the amenities that involve dogs, large and small, so my common sense is telling me the fenced-in parks are dogs that are off-leash. Is that correct?
Yes, it is an off-leash dog park.
Are there any, from these other entrances and shade structure, et cetera, are there any other opportunities that you would be offering the same off-leash amenity to dogs in the park? Or are they always going to be behind fences?
So we, under our ordinance, don't allow, we allow dogs in all of our parks, but they have to be on a leash, and that's just for the safety of all park users. Any off-leash dog access has to be within a confined space.
I thank you for that, and I realize it was voted on, I believe, in 2021 by the city council, and I think it was decided not only for public health but public safety as well as enforcement. So this is a great principle that we have in our parks as well. Be sure that we have enough amenities to fulfill the needs of all of the residents of all ages, as well as the pets that people bring to the park. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I have one more question. Samantha, there is an easement that runs under the several of the principal courts. Is that all an issue? Is that a storm drain easement? Is that stronger in the city or is that the county?
So engineering's looked at all of that. I can't speak specifically to that, but I know that they took that into consideration as they were designing this build-out. I don't recall where that easement belongs, but I know that they looked at it and they are confident that any three of these designs won't negatively impact this storm drain system.
Mr. Chairman, would that will be discussed by the planning commissioner, may be viewed again, correct?
Potentially, yes. But, you know, the easement, so that's all typically done through permitting and not in the purview of this commission, but I assure you it will be looked at and considered before we go out to do any construction.
Well, that should be our point, too, that to not recommend something that we don't really know the answer to. If you can assure us that that will be taken care of so we are not responsible for making a bad decision because we don't know the answer.
Mr. Chairman, I think what mainly, they have to sign some sort of an agreement that if that access to that storm drain, for some reason, is clogged up, that you acknowledge the fact that the utility can go in and deal with their storm drain, and then they won't be responsible for replacing the courts. You know, the likelihood, frankly, is remote, but, you know, that's what they do. You know, they say, okay, we got an easement, you build a court on it, not a problem, but if something happens, we'll fix it, and then you have to repair your own court. That's all. Probably never happened.
It's a probably. Probably never happened.
Well, there's probably and probably and a possibility, right? So it's probable and possible. It's probably possible, but not probable.
Well, we can, thank you for that input, and I think that we can keep a watch just if we, Samantha, could you please let us know when this comes before the planning commission?
Yes, I can notify you guys when it comes up.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, we have some speaker cards, so we will do that now. Ellie, Amber, Grant.
Hello. I'm an avid, I'm Ellie, I'm an avid volleyball player down at the Lost Winds Beach, and I really just kind of came to show up and find out what was going on with the sand volleyball courts. So that was informative that there'll still be four up at Steve Park. You know, I play tennis at San Luis Rey, and I know you guys have plans for that whole park in the future, but I look at all that sand there that was under the lawn bowling court. Oh my gosh, that's just two perfect sand volleyball courts right there. It's a thought. But, okay, this is the one thing that I really want to talk about. So are you adding two more courts at Lost Winds Beach as well? I heard that through our volleyball group.
It's probably out of scope. I don't even know the answer yet. Out of scope of what we're talking about tonight.
Okay.
Would that be something the city is doing, Samantha?
We can't speak to that because it's not on this.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, okay, I have a suggestion for the volleyball nets up at Steve Park then. I see, I just happened to be in Portugal, and I saw these amazing net posts, and I wanted to bring pictures of them, but I was too unorganized and I didn't have, but their metal net posts were the whole kind of inset, I don't know, basically so the nets could slide up to, you know, as high as the regulation and down to as low as like a tennis net. And I would highly recommend something like that because at the Lost Winds Beach, when the kids come for volleyball camp in the summer, they're mostly too small to use the nets. And we love kids and we love to watch them get better at volleyball and be introduced to the game, but they can't use the nets. So it's kind of frustrating seeing them use the nets when we could be, but we want them to play volleyball. So it's kind of, I don't know if anybody's interested in having me send a picture of the nets because they were highly used. I mean, they were playing soccer volleyball over it, they were playing tennis volleyball over them. And then, you know, at this height, smaller kids can use them for volleyball. So I don't know what, if you've already ordered nets for Steve Park or net posts, but I would love to suggest something versatile because, you know, kids are, the volleyball nets, the only ones we have are too high for kids.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a lot of others. Yeah, but anyway, I'm here to represent, I'm glad you're still putting the four volleyball courts in. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the chairman, please.
Is anybody interested in the net posts or no? Okay, I'll send them.
I have a question.
Susan?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Upon that suggestion, is it viable, Director Wiley, that this person could send that information to you for you to disseminate to us?
Absolutely. If you want to send it to me, I'll disperse it for the group.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the man queue. Do we have a timer going to make?
Yeah, sorry, that's on me.
Okay. That was not in relation to you. I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't even hear it. I was like trying to fill my notes here among my words.
Taking my training wheels off. Don't mind me.
Okay. Basically, I really wasn't prepared to talk about the subject matter, but when I look at the options, the least option that really is fiscally responsible, and I know that's not in your purview, however, it would be option A. But the most important detail to note is that the pickleball pro-shop was never discussed at the city council meeting, and I'm glad that Samantha made that adjustment. But again, that name, pro-shop, it really is a different meaning to that. I spoke with council member Cabral, and he informed me that that was never discussed at the city council meeting about having a pro-shop. In addition to that, we discussed if a championship court was ever discussed, and he said, no, it wasn't. And even with speaking with the city manager, it was his recollection that the only thing that was discussed was having enough courts, 24 courts, to have pickleball tournaments. So a championship court was never discussed. So that's something that's new and that are all on every option, A, B, and C. And so I'm really concerned about that, so it doesn't seem like it's a transparent process. So, I mean, I would love if there was an option D or a recommendation that suggesting to eliminate the pro-shop and the championship court and coming up with item D to think out of the box. And I think when I was looking also at, I was writing my notes, I wasn't really prepared. Samantha, as our Director Wiley mentioned, that the pro-shop was 654 square feet, and I was under the impression of 900 square feet, and I walked, and that's, and I kind of walked out how much 900 square foot is, and it's kind of like a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment, but now it's, I guess it's 654 square feet, which is different. However, just my concerns regarding the title of pro-shop because people are going to be thinking pro-shop, that's going to be like something at Indian Wells when we have a specialist there to restring your tennis ball rackets, tennis racket, sorry. Anyway, so I just hope that you, you know, take that into consideration. I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. David Hennings is next.
Hello, board. My name's David Hennings. I am a lifelong resident at San Clemente. I teach at Shortcliff's Middle School, and I'm a member of the San Clemente Skate Park Coalition. And I just want to come here to represent the hundreds of skaters who are youth, mostly adolescent. They're not very well organized. They show up sometimes, but sometimes it's more of a disruption, so we don't always bring them out. But they're active and they're sportive skateboarder, and they're passionate, they practice daily. And I've worked for years with the city and Samantha Wiley to put the lights on the skatepark. We formed a good relationship. And also, San Clemente has been helpful in getting the skatepark put into the master plan, which, you know, we started, it was totally an important part of the process, which we've learned. And I just want to, I guess my purpose here is to keep those skateboard facilities in the master plan. I was at school, at the beginning of the school year, and all these kids came running up like, Mr. Hennings, they started the skatepark at Steve Park. And I had to break the news that that was actually the pickleball courts building with the skatepark, and they go, anyways, you can imagine for 13- and 14-year-olds. Anyways, you know, I understand the urgency and there's some changes made in San Gavoneo. I don't think anything with recreation is either or. I think there's better solutions where there's opportunities for everyone. But I just want to remind the council that, you know, skateboarding is extremely popular sport in our city still, and it's been so for close to 50 years. It's proven, I worked as a middle school student to put the original skatepark in. It is extremely outdated, especially in cities. There's similar arts such as Carlsbad, Ocean Aside, and Sanitas, Plankton Beach, they have massive facilities that are up-to-date and safe and modern and convenient locations in the city. And just to, you know, urge the board to keep skateboarding in the master plan, we've talked to Samantha about, you know, potentially if that area changes, you could add street facilities, but there might be other smaller places. Skateboard facilities don't need to be massive or huge, they could be small, they could be the size of one pickleball court. At the school that I work at, there's four stairs, and skaters come for hours daily to skate four stairs, four stairs. So these things could be simple. And so I urge you to keep those features in the master plan, and I look forward to working with the city and continuing on this. So that's my message, just thought I'd drop in, but thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just noticed something that may be helpful.
I have a question for the skateboard advocate, thank you.
Yeah.
What's the regular occupancy of that facility? Is it 70 people, 100 people?
That's a really good question. You know, it depends on a lot of things. The lights we put in have been incredible as far as dispersing the crowd. Because what used to happen is you have a lot of, you know, you have the younger kids, and they actually, the parents look for times when the big guys aren't there. I have children, they participate in all sorts of sports, but like my daughters who learn to skatepark, I would take them there early in the morning. The lights have been awesome because a lot of the more aggressive skaters, they come at night now. But it just depends. I've been there at days when you have, you know, 60 people in that small facility. If it's, you know, the middle of the day and it's 85 degrees, it's less. But what is beautiful about skatepark is it is just per square foot, I don't think there is a piece of property in the city that is used and loved so much. And I also understand, you know, I'm a middle school teacher, I know that, you know, sometimes dealing with adolescents isn't the simplest thing, but it's a group that is sometimes at risk, that need a healthy outlet. And, yeah, so it's definitely, I would say it's at max capacity. And, yeah, so it's definitely, I would say it's at max capacity, and it's just kind of outdated. And we love it because it's kind of old and a lot of people group skate it, but it's definitely time to update the skate facilities. And we've worked with Samantha Wiley for a long time, we'll go in different plans, but, you know, it would be awesome to build a big master facility right there. Yep.
Okay.
I should go in.
Appreciate it.
But that's the question. It's a maximum.
Okay.
Which is about 60.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, for safely 60 people is way too dangerous on that.
Okay, so now it's back to us to have some discussion and any motions.
Well, for discussion purposes, I would move that we adopt Plan A. For purposes of discussion and for potential adoption.
I would like to just discuss in general the three points.
Okay, so let's see, do we have a second for Ed's motion?
All kind of done.
Okay. So I think we can still discuss in general the whole concept, so Harold, do you want to?
Yeah, I thought we, you know, it's been addressed in the previous meetings about the concern, the whole park with all these things that we're adding to it, that parking is a potential issue. So the possibility of, it seems like B and C can gain us more parking is a major concern if we're thinking down the road. And also that, you know, the whole thing has been that we expect this is going to be a phased-in kind of project. There's no way that the city's going to come up with capital to pull this off in one fiscal year. It's going to be over a longer time period, and it's going to have to be phased in. So being prepared for the long term with the phases, because it might take, you know, how many years, we don't know, to get to its full capacity above the planning here. So I think that the parking's a concern. To me, the other thing that I did like was the, I got the restroom, the secondary restroom is, in C, I like it just because it's clear down at the far end. And if you look at the whole master plan, at least that kind of like makes it closer to where those volleyball courts are going to be and the dog amenities are going to be, so people that are in that far end of the park could access that easier without having to walk through a number of the pickleball courts to get to it if it's in, been more in the center of it. So that was just a thought about that. I know that the discussion about the championship court, I'm not sure exactly where the City Council says on that as far as if there, I thought I had heard in one council meeting when they talked about tournaments, they talked about the championship court. I thought that had been mentioned in one of the meetings, but I'm not positive about that. But if you are going to take and try to lower in large tournaments to come and participate here and reap the revenue off of that, typically those kind of tournaments always funnel up to a championship game. And so they have to be on some specific court that that's going to happen, and that all your pickleball participants are working up towards this big special match, and that you're, and that court is not kind of opened up or able to be accessed or see people be able to see it better than many of the other courts, you know, then that's kind of, you're going to be not attracting those tournaments that would be looking for that kind of an environment, whether you have to build these structures around it or not. But just at least where you position it, that it's open around it so that you could always bring in temporary bleachers if you needed to anything for a particular tournament. But having the space around it is important for that. So that's also, again, these, particularly C, seems to be more open where that thing sits in relationship to the other courts. So those are just my comments and thoughts about the different things I noticed in A, B, and C.
Thank you. Any other thoughts?
Chairman, I have a question. Was the championship court contemplated when the 16-court plan was initially proposed at the council back in January? I don't believe it was on that plan, if I remember correctly.
I don't know that this commission ever saw a 16-court version. The only 16-court version was in the original conceptual master plan, which just drew out 16 pickleball courts. The championship court, as Commissioner Formaster has spoken to, is helpful. If the intention is to provide tournaments, then a championship court is necessary to perpetuate that activity.
Mr. Chairman. I think we're talking about this championship court exclusively in terms of tournaments, but the reality of the situation is if we harken back into the dark ages of San Clemente, the Rancho San Clemente Tennis and Fitness Club had a number-one court. And that is the court with some interest by everybody who was a member, that's where, if you'll excuse the expression, some of the big dogs would go and play. And it was a lot of interest. It was almost like a pecking order that they would be able to play on the championship court. So to have a championship court in a facility like this is not exclusively determined by the possibility of a tournament. It's sort of the, it's a facility that allows the best players to play on that court and the other players to come over and watch them play. So, I mean, that's the essence of that particular facility. So whether or not it's used for a tournament or not, I know it would be used on a regular basis by the people who would use the facility.
Thank you.
I have a comment. I think it's important for the concerned residents that are present to note that the City Council has decided to do the 24 courts at their May meeting, and our only option is to choose A, B, or C. There is no option that is absent a championship court. I'm really glad that the public can see the drawing because I think it's important for Ellie to see where the volleyball courts are listed and for Mr. Hennings to see the expansion of the skate park. So I'm really thankful that our tech person was able to bring that up so you can all see what the plan looks like in total.
I would like to make a comment.
Yes, Thor.
Thank you. So in regards to the championship court, I believe that it's almost a given that when we're building something of this level of commitment for the community, that it's not only just to bring in outside tournaments and international tournaments, which is great, you know, for our businesses here. But there's many local organizations and many youth groups and youth clubs too that will host their own tournaments for fundraisers and various purposes. And this is directly supporting the residents of our community. I think we owe it to them to approve this. Vice Chair, Weskin, I like your idea, however, I like to echo what Commissioner Formaster mentioned. I think parking is important. And I also think the placement of the restroom is good too for the various soccer fields next to it. So.
A. So, A.
I'm sorry.
C. I'm sorry, I don't mean to just get out of. Is that A? Are we talking about A with the Plan A?
Yeah, so with Plan A, you mentioned that you're favorable Plan A. However, I think it's important, we look at the parking spaces, and it also looks like the championship court, you know, there's only bleachers on one side, I think. Option C, you know, is favorable.
Does anybody else want to speak on the concepts overall? We do have a motion on the floor. Are we ready to vote on that? Okay. So the motion is to adopt Plan A. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's see, there was one aye there and was questions.
So I would like to vote for Option C.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a question in this vote?
Yes. Question now on that motion.
Why do you prefer C, albeit they all have a master court? Why do you prefer C over B?
Who are you asking that question?
I am asking that question.
Who?
Whoever wants to answer.
Okay.
But who made the motion? Was that?
Yes. So, to quickly answer your question, Commissioner, I prefer Option C because the restroom there on the bottom will be accessible to the soccer fields to the right of the pickleball courts.
Is that the only reason?
Yes, that's the only reason, in addition to the staff recommendation.
Then I can add my point.
Yes.
The reason I thought C was best was, one was the increased parking, so that made B or C better than A, then eliminated down to B or C. So then, for me, looking between B and C, the restroom, I thought was very important because that whole other end of the park now, from that other drawing, it's sitting over here, which is where the dogs areas are and also these volleyball courts. All the people that are over here, to get to the restroom in B, you have to go through half of the pickleball courts to get to them, where this is out on that outer edge, towards that side of the fields. So I think it'd be much easier accessible for everybody. So, C.
Right.
So those are the two reasons I thought of C is better.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My reason for also seconding that motion was because the restrooms are closer to the volleyball courts and the skate park, I'm sorry, the general field, which is number four, that's the Activity Meadow, as well as the dog park.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, is location of the bathroom, easier access, parking?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Twelve question.
All those in favor, let's see, the motion is to adopt Plan C. That was moved by Johnson and seconded by Formaster. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. And I think that makes us ready to go on to the next item, which is our work plan.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that one of the items to be considered, I'd like to ask Coach, one of the coaches, diversity coaches, relative to my backboards at San Gregorio, which is an item, I don't mean to get out of the sink here, but I'm recommending that they change the backboards at San Gregorio to the rectangular backboard.
Oh, to the glass.
Well, according to your friend, Coach Stevenson, in his group, they just want metal.
Are you asking them to put in a comic card or a speaker card?
Well, she wasn't aware of what was.
I know, I know.
I need a card.
Yeah, yeah, just.
Yeah, well, we have a couple steps before that, which is.
I don't want to get away.
Step right up. Okay.
What?
So Samantha?
Yeah, you can only speak on one item, or you can only talk once on each item.
I saw something on the pickleball courts, you know, when you didn't have magic.
Yeah, we can't let you come back and speak again, unfortunately.
I'll inhale if I can, it's important.
Okay. Okay. Sorry.
Okay, sorry.
So, good evening, Commissioner Samantha Wiley, Beaches Parks and Recreation Director. Before you tonight is another consideration of the work plan for the commission. I have a brief presentation that I wanted to cover with the group to go over what is a work plan, what we're here to look at, and kind of remind us of the goals of the commission. And we, as you can see in the staff report, this commission put together a really robust list of projects and ideas, and I think that's incredible to get the conversation started. Part of my effort tonight is to also help the commission understand what is a work plan item and what's something that we can handle administratively at the staff level. Because there certainly are a lot of things in this list that you can send to me and I will say, I can handle this, or here's why it might not work, but we can handle at the staff level. So I'm going to go through really quickly. This is from our municipal code, this is the function of the BPR Commission, just to remind us that we are an advisory to the city councils related to parks, beaches, recreation, and parkways. We will look at the annual budget. We, as, probably December or February, the commission will get to see kind of a peek at what are the projects that are coming up for parks and recreation, and we'll have the opportunity to opine on what the commission feels are important to fund. Of course, this commission will assist in the planning of parks and coordination of programs and all of those things that go into the recreation element, and then evaluate and review park development of plans for the city. So, this is a lot. I've broken it up on a couple of slides, but this is everything that's in the staff report. You can see it's further broken down into three sections, so there's maintenance on operations, capital projects, development, and then policy and procedure. I want to, I'll run through all of them, and I want to be sensitive to time, but I also think it's really important that the commission and the public understand what can the commission work on and what would be handled at the staff level as well. So adding refrigerated drinking fountains, this came up last year. I think it's a great concept, and I want to say that it's something that we strive to do. Anytime we're going to do a bathroom remodel or we are replacing drinking fountains, it is our practice to always add in a bottle refilling station going forward. And you'll start to see those more and more. This is not a work plan item, but it's something that, if, you know, there's a want to add one on the beach trail, and I know Commissioner Elliott specifically referenced T Street as well as North Beach and Calafia, which is a state beach, so we wouldn't have purview over that, and then the pier. So we are working on one at T Street, and maintenance is going to put that in this fiscal year. And then when the opportunity arises to install it at North Beach, there's not right now a location, but if we can configure it into the existing restroom concession building, we would do so. So that's that item, that's Item A. Item B, beautify San Clemente, collaboration with garden clubs and local nurseries, beautifying our parks. This could be something that you could form as a subcommittee potentially to talk about how the commission can support those efforts, but it would be a hard item to really hone in on as a work plan item. But certainly, if there's a preference on what kind of landscaping, some of it were dictated by specific plans within each area of the city, but this is going to be difficult for the commission to have purview over with a specific item. But I think, again, a subcommittee could be possible if that's the desire of the commission. And inclusive and sensory playground equipment for children with special needs, that again is, that would come up through a playground replacement, so it's not necessarily something that we'll be able to accomplish this year. We don't have a major park playground replacement on our CIP this year, but it's something that's taken into consideration on a case-by-case basis. Installing more workout equipment on beaches, that is, again, something that would, we can look at as space allows for, but not necessarily something that would come to the commission unless there's funding for it at this point, and there's not funding. So when we look at potentially our budget in the next coming fiscal year, that might be something the commission could contribute as a want or desire to see incorporated into the budget. Furniture replacement at San Gregorio Park and the pier for tables and benches specifically. This is part of a bigger conversation in the park system of furniture. You know, the care program was established to streamline the way benches and tables look in all of our city facilities. It also helps reduce costs if we have the same equipment that goes out in all parks and all beaches. Again, this is not necessarily a commission item unless the commission wants to look at all of our tables and chairs across all of the parks and what does that look like? It would be a bit of a broader stroke. It's not advised to just look. It's not advised to just look at specific sites per se. That can increase maintenance costs in the long term. Replacing basketball court backboards, that's again, not a work plan item, but can be handled at the staff level, happy to do that. And just get the feedback from the commission on what the want was, and then we can work with Public Works to put that into motion. Do you need me to pause on any maintenance and operation items?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Well, first of all, the refrigerated drinking foundation water bottle refill stations were proposed to the city council about four years ago by the Council Advisory Committee and approved, and I do recall Samantha, that you agreed that it was a staff question or a staff practice to get these things done. So, that was a T Street thing coming from some time ago. I'm so glad that Commissioner Elliott included that as well, so maybe we can actually get it done this coming year for 23 and 24 budget. Do you think that's feasible?
I believe it is, yes. I spoke to Public Works, and they are, they're active in that process to make it happen.
And then I have one other comment here on install more workout equipment on beaches. I didn't really realize there was workout equipment on any beaches, however, I really support having our parks have, or one or two of our parks, and maybe part of the beaches, we could discuss that, having work equipment that would really appeal to people who don't ride bikes or don't have more vigorous types of activity, they can be walking along and see a pull-up bar and say, oh, I could stretch here, or a bench and say, oh, I could do some leg lifts, or things of that nature. I talked to the head fellow Al at Dana Point, and he was, we had a long, long discussion about how valuable they are, in fact, they've been installed now in two parks at Dana Point, this kind of exercise equipment. So, I think I would recommend that we as a commission look at that as a major goal for 2023 and 24 and ask for money in the budget.
Okay. Moving on to capital projects and development, restroom installation at Linda Lane, this is part of the, was included in the Linda Lane site-specific plan update. Again, that's a bigger ticket item that would need funding in order to pursue that. Redevelopment of soccer fields at Vista Hermosa, these are all gonna, this whole category is going to fall under things that need money. So, in order for the commission to accomplish this year, it's unlikely because there's not funding attached to it. But that said, it could be something that we add at a next meeting, a budget meeting of wants to have potentially incorporated into a future budget, but there would be nothing to work on. That goes as well for C, establishing a punt track, that's in motion for Steve Park, it's designated there, and we just, we need to work to secure funding. Pursue support development of a miniature golf facility, that's also in motion at Vista Hermosa. Develop community gardens, those, that would be part of a master plan update. I'm happy to provide a update to the commission on the community garden status and where we've been, if that's the desire of the commission, but it would be difficult to make a work item of it as there's not necessarily funding attached. A bocce ball facility at San Luis Rey, again, that would be a master plan amendment and would require funding, along with a roller rink at any specific site. Developing a space to display restored military equipment, that is also something that would require some type of master plan amendment and funding attached to it. Erecting a statue of Ole Hansen at Costa Romantico or renaming a park as Ole Hansen Park, that, renaming a park is in the purview of the commission if that's something that the commission wanted to take up. Erecting a statue would also require funding as well. That goes with item K also, and then item L, building off-leash dog park south of the golf course property. This property, if I'm correct, is on state park property, so that would take some navigating and getting an easement or some type of agreement with the state. So, anything in the capital projects and development section, they really, you'd have to look at the feasibility of making all of those happen, and if that's something that the commission wanted to do, that's the way it could be approached, but to say that we're going to make these things happen in this section this fiscal year, it's unlikely because of the funding restrictions that we already have in our adopted budget. Are there questions on that section?
Oh, I have a comment, please.
Yes.
You had mentioned that we could put this on the agenda to just to talk about prioritizing the budget to fit some of these ones that we just talked about.
Yeah, so many years ago, the commission used to give feedback to staff in December or January of every year ahead of budget preparation, and the commission would provide feedback to staff on what they felt were priority projects that needed to be considered. Now, just because the commission was able to have their say in what they felt based on public feedback and their interactions with the public, that didn't mean that they necessarily got funded, but at least the commission was able to opine on what the body felt was priority for the next fiscal year. And I plan to do that again this year because again, it is in the, in our municipal code that that's a primary function of this body, so I think that's important.
So, can we put it on our next agenda?
We're a little bit too soon. My recommendation would be look at it in December of this calendar year.
Okay, can we make a note of that so we're reminded to include it on our December calendar?
Absolutely. And if the commission wants to set it in stone, you can add that to your work plan. Provide, you know, something to that extent, provide feedback on the prioritization of park projects for the next fiscal year or something like that.
I love that idea.
Okay. Policy and procedure, review of ADA compliance at all parks. I know that this was supported by a lot of different commissioners, and I want to say, I met with the city manager today, and he wanted me to reassure all of you that that will be handled at the staff level. There's not a lot that the commission can opine on because ADA laws are really black and white. We don't have a lot of wiggle room on what we can and can't do. We follow it, this is the way, these are the laws, and we need to comply. So, coming from Mr. Hall, he would like that to be handled at the staff level, and he assured me that we would be moving forward. I have direction to work to incorporate that into all of our future budgets with ADA funding that's available.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm pretty familiar with this ADA business, and it isn't entirely black and white with all due respect to our illustrious city manager. The ADA compliance can be phased, and one of the things that prevents you from having any kind of responsibility in terms of litigation is that there is a phased, considered program for the ADA. So I think the intention was to begin that process possibly through a committee here in the Parks and Recreation Commission, just to basically, you know, we're responsible looking at all these parks, maybe look through and see what could be done. I know there's a staff person who's responsible for this, I don't know how much time being allowed to this thing. I only have to say, this is a significant exposure to the city of San Clemente in terms of not having a program at least in place. No one's going to expect you to basically make everything compliant, but you have to have a program and a consideration of what you're going to do and when you're going to do it. So I don't know how that fits.
Right.
With what they were talking about, but that's the intention of this review of ADA compliance.
And I think that City Manager Hall's point is that it, there does need to be a phased approach. We do have a staff member who oversees that, and it really doesn't need to come to the commission to review because there is a proper procedure that the city needs to go through, and we need to start acting on that. That was his impression and his want.
Is it, would you be the possibility of just having a report from the department about, you know, what the status is and what their timeline or plan is, just to keeping us informed of?
Sure, I'm happy to provide, I'm happy to do that, absolutely.
I think that's a great idea, and that should be concurrent with whatever you're doing.
Okay. Anything else on A? Okay. Moving on to B, consider exceptions to the Timpean Beach curfew. Again, this can be handled at the, kind of at the more administratively, and this is a great concept. Of course, there's popular things like the Grunion Run, and you get the Red Tide Event or the Bioluminescence, and it brings people out to the beach. The city at the staff level can kind of make those exemptions as we want to warrant them if we feel like there's not an unnecessary stress to health and safety or any concern at that level, but we would be able to handle that at the staff level as well. Implement options for dog access on beaches, this is, this could be a work plan item that the commission reviews. Certainly, there's a lot of history there, but this is something that could go on the work plan, as well as consider off-leash dog options. Improve park reservations, that would be something that would be handled at the staff level, as well if there's concerns or ideas for improvement. Start with staff, and then if there's a need to come to the commission, we could. Funding and sponsorship committees, again, this would be a work plan item. Collaborate with the Human Affairs Committee to host health and resource fairs, that is a work plan item. I'm actually going to go, there we go. And then take no, I wanted to make sure I read this correctly. There was a want to ask to not review the five master planned parks since there is not funding for this year. And then lastly, and this was my error, I forgot one item that was provided by Vice Chair Questan titled the Inflation Reduction Act, which, Ed, you can correct me if I'm wrong, essentially encourages the city to seek grant funding for any cost recovery opportunity, like solar panels or anything like that, which is a practice that we always want to be in. So I don't know how, it certainly could be a work plan item if the desire is there, but with that, I've spoken too much. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any. And then I know, Chairman, you had maybe a thought on how to slice this and get through it, and I will turn it to you.
Okay, so my first thing is to ask you a question.
And I have some public comic cards, by the way.
Okay. So there were two other items that were, it said was proposed by staff. Do you want to talk to those two as well?
Sure. So one of those is the fee study, that will go on the work plan, that's a really important piece that I want the commission to see and review, and we want that public input. And then the other one was that North Beach placemaking plan. Really, the intention there is to, we have some funding already budgeted for the North Beach playground replacement, so any playground replacement the commission gets to see. So that would come to the commission, and then if there's any opportunity or want to look at, what is that empty lot on El Comunial, whatever uses that might be, it could come in front of the commission as well if that opportunity arises.
That's at the bottom?
It's the vacant lot in between Landers and the Beach Hut Deli, right on PCH there.
It's a roller rink.
They've had like good affairs there, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments on policy and feature for some of those, please.
Yes.
Director Wiley, when would you start the ADA program?
So, I would work with our building official, who actually oversees all of our ADA compliance, and we'd have to look to see where there is available funding, but I think that as Vice Chair Questan has stated, the best approach is a phased approach, we just need to start understanding how we are going to roll it out. So, looking, I have a list from our 2018 Beaches, Parks and Recreation Master Plan that calls out some areas that could be improved for access, so I think we'd start there, and then see what we can do with what's currently allocated, and then look for funding in future fiscal years as well.
Okay, but I'm missing a date. When are you, when are you thinking applying to do this?
I don't have a date specific. I don't want to commit to a date at this point because I have not spoken to our building official, but I think if staff can pick this up in the next couple of weeks and get together to start brainstorming, that would be my goal.
This is an item we could put in our work plan to be sure that this is followed through, since so many of us thought it was very important.
That's up to the commission, yes.
You know, I'm sorry, Andy Hall walked in the room when you were talking to Smith, I don't know if you knew that, but I would like to, if it's possible at this point, maybe as an extension of the staff report, to hear Andy's thought on this question because it has come up several times.
Sure.
And Andy, if you wouldn't mind, let's see if I can figure out how to ask him this question. We have, we've heard several times about ADA compliance in parks.
Just real quick.
Sure.
I heard my name, but I couldn't hear what you were saying. I don't know if your mic is on or not, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is now. I'm sorry, maybe I had it off.
Sorry, so I wasn't sure what the question was.
Yeah, so we've heard several times about concerns about ADA compliance, and now it has showed up as a suggestion to go on to our work plan. And I guess, my thinking is that ADA compliance is something that's bigger than parks and recreation and beaches, but I guess, I would like to hear from you how this kind of fits in with the overall concerns about ADA compliance citywide.
Yeah, I think that ADA is something that we, this is, I agree, I don't think this is a work plan issue, this is something we need to do, it's something we need to do as quickly as possible and throughout all the city facilities. This isn't something that we should phase, this is something that we should go to the council and say, all of our, all of our facilities in the city should be accessible to people in the community. So, I can assure you, it's going to take a very high priority in the financial planning for the city immediately. This isn't, again, this isn't a 10-year plan, this is probably a 10-month plan, let's get this done. This is something that needs to be done at every one of our parks immediately, and not just parks, by the way, it's all the city facilities.
So are you saying 10 months?
I'm just saying, I think it needs to be addressed immediately.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Yes.
Mr. City Manager, thank you for addressing the issue. My question is, what is the process that we do to assess our exposure for non-compliance? In other words, D, the work plan letter or whatever directive that was created basically said, was requesting that we get the appropriate information, the current CAL DAG or whatever the latest is, and more importantly, that we possibly get and budget for a consultant to assist, not necessarily do the whole thing, but to assist in making a review of our facilities. Now, from my perspective, and I could be wrong, correct me, our biggest exposure, from my standpoint, is our parks and recs and restrooms and beaches, et cetera, et cetera. I think this building here now is fully compliant thanks to our friends at Gensler, but I think that's what we have, so that's why I'm saying maybe it's in the purview of this commission as a help, not necessarily exclusively, right, but to be kind of aware of what it is we need to do, we need to start that process. That's what the work letter proposed, was not to do anything other than get information, possibly a consultancy, and maybe some resources to basically have the commission assist the city and the city staff person.
Yeah, and I hope I, I hope I'm answering this the right way. The work of the Beach Parks and Recreation Committee is critically important. What I want to express to you is that I think, I want to make sure that we get our facilities ADA compliant as soon as possible, immediately, wherever possible. So, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want a work plan, if you will, to slow down our efforts to get moving on ADA. So I wouldn't want to say, well, let's hold off and give these guys a chance to talk about it and review it, and maybe comes forward with a recommendation. I think the ADA law is very, very clear, and I think that the solutions to making sure all of our facilities are very, very clear. And so if the Beach Parks and Recreation Committee want to continue to discuss ADA, I think that that's very appropriate. I just want to do it in a way that we can move forward, if we can get to the city council and find some funding next week, a lot of that work has been done. We have a consultant that has identified several things in our community that need to be done immediately to be ADA compliant. I wouldn't want to slow that down if we can find some funding by saying, well, this isn't our work plan, let's let them work that through. I want to move this as quickly as possible. If it's something that you would like us to review with you on a regular basis and come back and report, we've got this part looked at, we're going to get, working on it, we're going to work on this, we're going to work on that, I think that's very appropriate. I just wouldn't want to wait for the work plan to be completed before we start doing ADA. I think that's what I'm saying, I want to make it a priority that we move on immediately. I I want to make it a priority that we move on immediately.
Yeah, I think correct.
Did that answer your question? I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I go back to my comment stuff?
Sure.
Thank you. I was looking at B, um, on quality and procedure, to consider exceptions to the Tempean Beach curfew. Yes, I think we do that all the time in the city, but such as the Grunion Run, I don't know if all of you heard the the supervisor or the uh person in charge at State Parks and Superintendent, this is title, announced that they did not have sand for Grunion to even accomplish.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So.
I don't know if they just have the microphones turned down, but but you can't hear them, so I don't know if you talk closer or something. The microphones might be turned down tonight, that might be.
Oh, maybe.
Sorry about that.
I'll I'll talk. Thank you so much for telling me that. I was just saying the uh.
Can I have me?
The.
No, you can have it on the line.
Can you? Oh, you guys can hear.
Can you hear me out there?
That's why we're like this.
Oh, you can't hear me, huh?
They've been missing all these good things. We have to start with.
So much insight. Brilliant.
Okay, Susan.
Well, I was just saying that the Superintendent of State Parks announced that there was not enough sand for Grunion to even approach the beach and look under the or and might, you know, dive into the the sand. So that's not a problem for this year, but it is always a a first place thing that State Parks ensures the the protection of the Grunion Runs and other things that probably Commissioner Elliott had in mind for seasonal beach activities as well. And then um in terms of implement options for dog access on beaches, I I don't I don't know that this should come up this year. I would not support that at all because the city council was pretty adamant in 2021 when they reviewed everything. Their discussion took over a half hour to talk about bacteria, et cetera, mostly um the threat of danger of public safety and public health, as well as the problem with enforcement for dogs on the beach and and loose on the parks. So I would not support that as a work plan item. And I do think that we do need a a funding and sponsorship committee because I think that would be helpful not only for our city, but also for our beaches and parks. And getting together with Friends of San Clemente would be very wise. I my the other thing is, um, I have a question about collaborating with Human Affairs Committee to co-host Health and Resource Fairs. After all, we're not dealing with Health and Resource Fairs. We're dealing with parks, recreation, and beaches. So I I think that's a total different category. It would be different if you decided just on your own to go help and volunteer with some of their fairs and uh some of their given relations things, but I don't think it warrants a a place on our BP and our uh work plan.
Let me just, I'm sorry, let me interrupt. The one thing we didn't do here um was take some public comments. So before we get to our own thoughts and comments, let's do the public comments. So I have a public, I have a card from Mary Mulligan.
Yeah, she's been delayed.
She just left, okay.
You can sign here.
She was late.
Working there, just not here. Yeah. Are they, are any of them?
Are we okay now?
Yeah, absolutely. We see how you can hear it through there, like on my end to see if everything's fine. So I guess, uh, are any of them waking up? Are they all on?
They're all on.
They're all on?
They're on, and I'm talking.
Yeah, as long as you can hear, it's being recorded. If you guys can just speak loud.
Okay. We'll do.
I'll try pressing more buttons.
Okay.
Actually, actually, Mr. Madam.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I should have filled out a card because I have a a letter that I was asked to read on something. I recuse myself from the commission to do that, Director Wiley.
Yes.
Yes, and I'll I'll go ahead with the speaker for speaker's light. Okay, Erica Kingsalder. Oh.
That's it.
Step up here.
Hello, I'm Erica Kingsalder. Um, thank you for those of you who responded to me uh this week about my email regarding dog-friendly beach hours. Today, I'm here to request a trial for on-leash dog-friendly beach hours on San Clemente beaches. Um, from past discussions on this topic that I've read in the July 2021 agenda notes, thank you, Susan, for sending me those, um, there are three main areas of concern. One being uh water quality. Um, I think there's more risk of toxic chemicals, plastic, trash, urban runoff getting into our water than there is dog poop and pee on the beach. It shouldn't be a distracting item to really like not address the real issue that we have serious massive pollutants going into our beaches. That should be our only focus. Uh, Lugano Beach has been operating the dog-friendly beach hours for years and has top ranking in ocean quality from multiple sources. If considered, I really think an updated study should compare the water quality in Lugano Beach versus San Clemente. Um, being a new resident of this city and living and growing up in Orange County my whole life, it was really surprising to me that we aren't as up to date as neighboring cities with our uh dog-friendly policies for our residents. Um, the second area of concern is costs associated with enforcement and development. And I know that this has been debated at great length, and one of the efforts was to make a dedicated dog beach. Um, costs associated with building fences, barriers, and um any type of infrastructure to build out dedicated dedicated dog beach are clearly expensive, uh, but there are minimal costs uh that were written that were associated with uh dog-friendly beach hours. It would be limited to simply new signage for explaining the dog-friendly beach hours. Uh, there are plenty of existing waste bags and trash cans all along our beaches. I think allocating a few low-traffic times of the day for dog-friendly beach hours will not impact the cost of enforcement or distract our already busy lifeguards. Uh, because animal control is currently being relentlessly called on our dogs this summer before 9:00 AM, I actually think it's gonna reduce the cost in our enforcement um trying to regulate these rules if we establish um a few hours in the early morning and the late evenings where residents can take their dogs um during low-traffic times. Um, also conditional lifeguards on duty and taking them away from obviously the the important job that they they have of protecting our oceans. The third area of the concern is safety. Um, in 2021, the Public Input Survey on Beach Access for for Dogs received a total of 1,300 submissions. Ninety-one of those submissions were San Clemente residents, and eighty-one of those San Clemente residents were dog owners. Sixty-one point one percent responded, yes, that dog should be allowed on the beach and to play on the beach. I think that if we can safely walk our dogs every day on the narrow, busy streets of people commuting, riding their e-bikes, on Del Mar on a Friday night.
Thank you, Erica. I'm sorry. I I rushed off here. Our time, our time is up.
Thanks so much for saying.
Thank you. Hey, Susan, I'm gonna go in the order that, oh, okay, you got it correct. Okay, Amanda is next.
Oh, you can have Susan because she can, it's all right. I'll speak after Susan. Oh, that'll be great.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm speaking, Assistant Director, President of San Clemente. I am reading an uh opinion from another resident, Bruce Martin, who was unable to make it here tonight, who asked me to read this letter for her. I'm happy to do so. Dear BP and R Commissioners, as you prepare your 2023-24 work plan, please include the following. One, prioritize ADA compliance for all city park restrooms. Two, prioritize ADA picnic areas in all city parks where picnic areas exist. Three, prioritize ADA picnic table slash tables in all city parks where tables exist. Finally, please address the 2021 Five Park Master Plan. The plan, the twenty-one, the 2021 BP and R Commissioners recommended parentheses, but was never brought to council parentheses close, is now obsolete due to substantial changes in two of the five parks that the prior commissioners were not informed of, nor did they approve. Hence, the plans that have been put on pause need to be discarded entirely. Further, as your BP and R Director, nothing can be done with the plans as they require sequels, and there are no monies available. This applies to the design to increase pickleball courts by 50% and the addition of items such as a pro shop in Steve Park. I urge you to discard the obsolete Five Park Master Plan. It will require a restart that reflects the numerous changes and issues that have risen in the past two years. Please understand that the only item that council advised BP and R to prioritize is the building of eight pickleball courts in Steve Park, which is now underway, and remove all pickleball play in San Gragonio Park no later than November 7th, 2023. Thank you for your dedication to our city.
Thank you, Susan. Amanda?
I have a presentation, and I'm glad that the city manager was here. Unfortunately, he wasn't here to confirm that the championship court and the pro-plan shop was never discussed at the city council meetings. So um, you know, if I challenge any of you to uh give, you know, to let me know when if that was because it was never discussed. So next slide, please. Um, so when I looked at the the list provided by the um commissioners, um, you know, some of them already were done. Here's San Clemente Times article of May 8th, 2023, saying that um the city's already under negotiations over a potential mini golf course, uh, mini golf. Uh, next slide, please. And here is that it was already brought to the BP and R, and there was a six-zero-one vote in February, and Commissioner Rockbacher's time recused himself from that decision. So um, next slide, please. Um, and there was one um request was pursue and support development in miniature golf. This was already brought to the city council, so I just wanted to copy um, you know, who was uh who was who spoke at that city council meeting, uh, Rick Lauthner, who is our appointed uh city council member, and a couple of others who are from Salty Surf, uh, Salty Surf. Uh, next slide, please. And as far as the North North Beach Placemaking Plans, it does include modification of beach hours, and that was done because there was uh safety concerns regarding at North Beach and uh the concerns of the North Beach residents and business owners. Next slide, please. And it is my understanding that there is already a resolution to that, and I think it was Commissioner Alyssa mentioned about uh possible seasonal beach activities, you know, for the Grunion Run and Council, Commissioner Amber's already stated uh the problems with with the sand at that point. Next slide, please. Um, and I think it was Commissioner Johnson that said that develop the space to display restored military equipment, including small and more recognizable names of San Clemente fallen soldiers, or we already have that. One, we have that at the community center, and we have that, of course, number five. However, um, you know, this is um was already brought by the city council, uh, about a couple of San Clemente residents. Next slide, please. Uh, to beautify San Clemente um club, uh, beautify San Clemente, the San Clemente Garden Club already does that. They already did, they do that at the Casa Romantica Cultural Center and Gardens and um parts number five. And so, and when I looked at the fiscal year vendor list that was provided me by the city manager, it was interesting that the city already has ten landscaping companies that they have contracted with. So we really have a lot of that already in plan.
Thank you, Amanda. Uh, okay, so it's now up to us to do what we need to do to kind of develop a work plan. So I would like to suggest something, um, just to give you an idea of the last couple of years. Uh, 2021, we had seven items on our work plan. Twenty-two, we had five items on our work plan, and that was at a time when uh the coastal issues were with this commission. So um, if we take those out, those numbers will probably be even less. So we're now at, you know, twenty-five items here. I think, in my opinion, we need to get these down to about sitting ballpark of six or eight items that we actually can work on. So I would suggest, um, but I mean, we can have similar ideas here. I would suggest that we each write down our top six items, I guess I'll say, and um then we will kind of collect those and see where we rank.
I have an idea.
I have a question, Chairman. Some of these items, aren't they indicated, they really don't even belong on a work plan? Shouldn't we get those off of this first?
Do you do you want to try to do that first?
I think it would save time.
Do you?
Well, okay, um, I have a comment. Um, I I did take note to the ones that do not fall in this purview. Um, so myself, I know not to include them at least.
So I'm sorry, what's the last question?
So so I know that if we were to uh submit a top six, uh, I wouldn't include, you know, the ones that that aren't included.
So some of the items, Mr. Chairman, some of the items that were considered not to be in the work plan was because there was no budget. And is that consistent with the idea that we're only talking about 23, 24? We're talking about 25, 26?
Well, this is definitely a work plan for 23, 24 that we are developing here.
Right, but if we're developing a work plan for 23, 24, which would require a certain amount of uh pre-development activity, would that then push that to 25, 26? I mean, some of these things that we're talking about aren't necessarily within the next nine months. Potentially, the work plan would be involved in developing uh developing uh infrastructure or developing situations where it might go to 25, 26, or 27. Do you see what I'm saying? Do, I mean, what are we talking about? Just, you know, sweeping the sidewalk in the next nine months? Or are we talking about doing those kinds of capital improvements that require more than just nine months to consider? That's, I guess my question is, isn't the work plan more than just the next immediate period of time?
Mr. Director, would you like to answer that question? Director Wiley?
Yeah, I I understand what you're saying, I think. Um, I think it's, we we want the work plan to be items that can be achieved and they're attainable and and from now until June of 2024. Um, some of the items on this list, yes, there's um, there's no funding for them, that's one component, but also we haven't received specific direction that that we even want to look at developing some of the projects on here. So um, I guess in that instance, you could have a work plan item that does say that the commission wants to look into, um, you know, I'll I'll use item K as an example. The commission wants to understand the feasibility of establishing a professional sort of recognition plaza. That that is a work plan item. Um, how we would go about doing that, um, we'd figure out. Um, there's just, I think to your point, Vice Chair Questan, you're talking about the planning that it would take this fiscal year in order to have funding available following this figure for development. Is that true?
Yeah.
Correct.
I understand. So then anything on the capital projects list, all of that would just be essentially feasibility or interest of development of these facilities, not that we're going to develop these facilities or we're going to construct um a roller rink or any of those things. It would just be looking at the feasibility. Does that answer your question?
Yes, would that then qualify as a work plan?
Yes.
Basically do feasibility, even if there's not, I I mean, some of these things, I don't think they have a lot of impact in terms of budget, but in order to even have a budget, some of these things need to be considered and developed. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So maybe it's a 25, 26, and the council and the city managers say, okay, now we know we need 75,000 or 50,000 or whatever, and we've acknowledged the fact that it's something that's of interest or to the community.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I guess I'm thinking that some of this stuff has to be in advance. It's the preliminary or the pre-construction or the pre-design that basically we would consider for the current period. Uh, is that consistent with what we want to do with this, with these work plans? It is that, is that what we're saying, or we just, everything has to be within the next nine months? Or we just, everything has to be within the next nine months?
I, I support what you're saying, Vice Chair, that some capital improvement projects take more than nine months to plan. I think it's important that we do think ahead of the future. So, I think I'd express support if you want to put something in there. I think that's a good idea.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe we should go start with maintenance and operations and eliminate the things that are, that we were informed by Director Wiley will be done by staff, their staff responsibility. For example, maintenance and operations, A was one of them. And Director Wiley, please correct me if I'm incorrect. A was one that you said would be done by staff. Beautify San Clemente, you suggested we could form a subcommittee, so that, that would be doable as a potential goal. Include the sensory playground equipment for children special, with special needs. Again, that's in the playground budget, so that would be Samantha. Install more workout equipment on beaches. I don't think there is anything there, but that might be one that we would consider doing the feasibility of doing something like that. Furniture, tables and benches replacement at San Gorgonio Park and at the pier. That was pointed us to, pointed out to us that this should be happening at all parks. We should not just segregate two parks to have that done for tables and benches. So, that is a, perhaps a feasibility, but more so, I believe that's a Samantha Wiley thing. Replace basketball courts at San Gorgonio Park. That is a direct item, and I think that we could put that as any action plan on our work plan. So, that's just one thing. Does anybody concur with what I said or your agreement? Do you, Director, do you have any concerns about what I recommended based on what you told us could or couldn't be done?
Mr. Chairman? Yes.
I would concur substantially with Commissioner Ambrose. However, I'd like to at least comment on the item number E, which is the furniture issue. I think possibly we would do a potential, a potential beta test of the furniture before we would engage in a rather large, global, all-park kind of issue. So, the intention here was, was to use some budget and to replace some benches and provide some game tables down at the pier and potentially at San, at San Gorgonio as kind of, like I said, a beta test to just see how that equipment would potentially work. If it was suitable, then we would consider it, you know, on a broader, more global basis. So, that would be the intention there as opposed to compromising all the parks just to get started with it.
Well, Commissioner, a question, would you put that as a develop a subcommittee to, again, work on that as an item?
Sure. Okay.
So, of those, of those, which of those are palatable to put down as goals for us?
I would like to express my support for item A from Commissioner Elliott.
Oh, that's already going to be done by staff?
See, this is why I think we should all kind of just pick our own items and see where we are kind of agreeing what's coming up at the top.
But that's, that's not a decision we can make. That's, that's already going to be done by staff.
Okay. I wasn't talking about that particular item. I was talking about how we get through this list and get it down to a reasonable number in the six or eight range.
Okay, I guess to address quickly the world famous basketball backboards at San Gorgonio. Mary Mulligan was here. I don't know if you all know who Mary Mulligan is. She was one of the most successful basketball, women's basketball coaches in the state of California. So, I was going to solicit her opinion regarding backboards, okay? What we have up there real quickly, and I'm not going to get in the weeds on this, is that we have some very small kind of backboards, and that particular facility is used by a lot of people. And they have contacted me and said they would like to have the backboards, at least at that park, changed to the full-size backboard, which is four by six. So, I put that together. There was a little budget for the equipment. And then, of course, I carried some staff time to go with the forklift and, you know, change the item. So, that's kind of a real minor issue, but it is, seems to be very popular with, with some of our users, and it's relatively inexpensive.
It can be have at the staff level as well. It doesn't need to be.
Okay, good. That takes care of that.
Well, so in maintenance and operations, there's only, there's only three. There's the subcommittee for beautify San Clemente. There is the install workout equipment on beaches. Again, that could be a subcommittee. And then they replace the basketball court backboards.
Well, I believe Director Wiley said that.
Oh, that was going to be staff, that's right.
Yes, it's staff.
Thank you. So, there's only two.
Well, the subcommittee things are, we would form subcommittees on them. They wouldn't be a work plan, right? That's one thing or the other. We'd create a subcommittee that, they need to a certain subject, and then they come back.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, if it's on our work plan, I think it would be a, a reasonable that you might want to form a subcommittee to kind of go out and kind of trust me.
Be on the work plan, but then it would be part of it. It would be just form a subcommittee.
Right, 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 got it.
So, do you, for right now, do you want to just choose those two, B and D?
I have a question about A. For Director Wiley, you, you mentioned that the refrigerator drinking fountain at T Street, is that already approved? It's already approved?
Yeah, there's, there's funding in the maintenance budget. They just need to work to get it installed and purchased.
Do we need to keep A on, on our work plan as related to North Beach?
So, North Beach, if, if the commission will trust me to, if the, if the opportunity allows us to install a water bottle fountain there, we will do it. We'll have to look at the facility, though. I don't think it needs to be on a work plan, but I'm happy to bring back and update you in a step.
Thank you. So, getting back to maintenance and operations, are we comfortable with the two, with B and D?
I thought we were just going to eliminate the ones we're not going to be voting on, and then we are all going to come up with our list of six. Is that, are we doing this as we go down through this?
Would you?
I just thought it would be easier just to do it.
But I think we're going to still end up with more than what we put on our plan, though, even if we go at this, at this, at this rate.
Well, then, when we're down to that, we can eliminate what's, what's incidental. For example, the capital projects, we, we have nothing in here, actually. Isn't that correct?
So, you're saying there's nothing in the capital projects development that you would want to put on our plan?
Well, we can't, we have no money to do anything with that. Director Wiley, what is your recommendation?
Right, so, so there's no, there's no money for any of these things. I can tell you, looking at capital, let's go forward here. Capital projects, so, the public.
I think the only one you pointed out was doable was perhaps K.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start with A, B, and C all require funding of some sort. And there's not necessarily a feasibility or design element that we would do in this fiscal year to even look at it. I would be the first to agree that San Gorgonio Park has a drainage issue, but I can also say all of our fields do. And if we had all the money in the world, we'd love to fix those. But I'm happy to kind of add it to our rolling list of when funding is available to fix irrigation. We certainly will do that at any of our sports fields. It's just not been a high priority. I think the redevelopment of this Hermosa. Commissioner Johnson, if I'm correct, are you, are you referencing the meadows, the undeveloped area? Is that what you're referencing?
This is for C.
For item B as a void?
Yes, yes, the, the meadow.
Okay, so that's actually something staff's working on. We, we hear that that is a need, and we really would love to move forward with that. And depending on where we land with the pickleball facility at Steve Park, we may have leftover funds from parks acquisition that we would, we would love to also finally improve that space as well. But if that does come to fruition, that item would come to the commission, regardless of it, if it's on his work plan or not, because that kind of falls under park improvements and park planning. So, it would come to the commission, and it would go to council for final adoption. So, I don't think that needs to go on the work plan either, but do know that that's a, that's a, on our list too at the staff end as well. Item D and E, those are already in, and kind of in the wheelhouse. We're working through those, so you, you wouldn't need to include those. Develop community gardens, that could go under potentially feasibility if there's a want to understand locations and what it would look like. But again, there's no funding to Commissioner Ambrose's point. That's the same as the restrooms at Linda Land. Sorry, I'm going back to A. There's just no funding for that. There is potentially a plan, but it was met with a lot of different feedback from residents as well. Same thing with G, there's, you could look at feasibility, but there's no funding along with H, which is the roller rink, and I, and J, and K, and L as well. So, all of those would have to fall under the, we would establish some kind of feasibility effort to understand how it would look.
So, we're moving down.
Well, wait a minute. Okay, are, are we all ready to accept that? Move on to the other items? Sounds like we are. Yes, all right, okay, thank you.
So, if we go on to policy and procedure, again, from what Director Wiley has found out and confirmed by Andy Hall, our, our city manager, the review of ADA compliance is going to be done by the city, his department, et cetera. And they have a plan and a need immediately. So, I think we should leave that alone. And I do believe that it was one of those commissioners here who suggested that we get a report from Director Wiley on the comings and goings and the success of the ADA compliance as it goes along.
Do we want to have a committee for that, then? A subcommittee to sort of process that information?
Well, we could, I mean, I don't know that we need a subcommittee to process the information. All of us should get the report at the same time from Samantha, unless you see a need to have it recorded. Although, city manager suggested that, we didn't do that. So, we didn't want to get in the way.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't suggest we get it away, but I think it's important that there be a group, a focus group that reports to the commission. I mean, we're going to take our commission time to review this. I think it's better to get a report, much like a report you do on the beaches. You know, you report to us on the beaches. You kind of crystallize and synthesize all that information. I'm suggesting maybe a committee relative to that. We get the information, city manager, and building department, and come back to us and just let us know what's happening. Not interfere, but just let us know as a report.
I think that would be coming as promised through Director Wiley. Isn't that true?
That would be the plan to update you as, as changes are implemented.
And if we choose to do a subcommittee on this, I think, I think we could probably do that at some, at some point. It's probably not part of this. This, this is, do we need to put this on our work plan? I personally would say no.
I would say no. And we should honor that request of the city manager. But on the others, you've got C and D that talked about dog access, et cetera. I wouldn't want to support that, but I'm not sure how my colleagues are.
Yeah.
Well, we are talking about support that. We're talking about whether you can put it on a work plan or not.
Who's helping?
Well, I thought she was going through the list to say which things, staff is going to be which things we could consider to put on our list.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. Those two are things that we could, that would go, that could go on a work plan.
Thank you.
I just want to talk about the dog, dogs on beaches, because I was on here in 2021, but I did listen, earlier in 2021 when this came up, I did listen to the convenings that were going on on this topic. It seemed like a big issue was water quality. And I think we are simply at a different place now than we were then in terms of water quality. Water quality, ocean water quality was a big concern, and we did not want to be perceived that we may be doing something that could contribute to that problem at the time. I don't think this would contribute to an ocean water quality problem. And just within the last year, I visit, we, we happened to visit the Monterey area to the north. It was Ocean Beach in San Diego to the south. We just happened to see people really enjoying being on the beach with their dogs, on leash, off leash. We can decide that as we talk through it. I just don't know why it's, why it seems to be an issue that we could have a place in San Clemente where people could take their dogs on the beach and run on the beach, whether it's on leash or off leash.
I, I agree with you on that. I mean, I, I was, watched that whole issue back in 21, and I saw the survey that the department conducted. And overwhelmingly, the residents were in favor of this. And then it got discussed, and different groups then, you know, brought these other points up, and it ended up being voted down. And then went to city council, and based upon the recommendation of the commission, was again voted down. At that time, though, the commission also voted in favor of that we needed to act immediately on finding other off-leash options in our parks and start to create more opportunities. And what's happened is we have a master plan that has more of those things, but we haven't changed one thing since in years now, besides the one park that's out there on the far corner of our entire city. And so, we really need to do something to be able to do that. We've got a lot of residents that really are in favor of that. The whole, the beach, Huntington Beach has access. Newport Beach has, Laguna Beach does, Del Mar does, San Diego does. Many communities do, and they limit it sometimes to certain times of the day and certain seasons. And we can take a certain section of the beach and just do that. We just are wanting to have a work plan of a group that will then study this and come up with some ideas to present.
I agree. It's important to stand on a work plan.
We, we owe it to the residents.
I, I can't tell you that it's always a threat to bacteria on the beach with.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we're getting into too much discussion. So, we're focused on a work plan. You're on C and D, those are viable options. F is a viable option for a work plan. Collaborating with human affairs is not necessarily a priority of this commission. But if the, if the commission by majority wants to look into that, we can do so. And then H is, you know, it's not also, it's not really a work plan item. It's more of a note that we're, we're not taking action at this point in time. I think that covers it.
Well, I'd like to add to that because you took away about half of my statement there. I said, take no action on the master plan updates this year because we have no funding, which you told us yourself in our last meeting. And there's no point in spending time on it if we can't fund anything, as evidenced in the, the policies of, from ADA L on the subject that had are ahead of us before what we're talking about right now. So.
Correct, and then, I'm sorry, I do have one more. That's the Inflation Reduction Act that was brought up. And that is really just the effort to seek up grant funding for solar panels and any type of renewable energy efforts, which we do at the staff level as well in engineering.
So, is it going to be a work plan item, or, or, or is that a staff item?
That would be a staff item. It certainly could fall under potentially the funding and sponsorships committee. Funding certainly goes hand in hand with any type of grants or federal aid that might be available.
So, I, I'd like to move to adopt C, D, and F or add them to the work plan and continue voting on the other items.
Does policy and procedure, which one has it under capital?
Policy and procedure section?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so we are only voting on three items in this section, and we're continuing to talk on the other items. Is that what you, that's what the motion was?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on that motion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So, it's C and D, right?
No, C, C, D, and F?
C, D, and F. Now, I'm an aye, we're that also.
Okay, unanimous.
And that is to, to put, put together some subcommittee for that part of that. Or C and D?
Maybe not necessarily, but that's kind of the next step. We'll, we'll talk about the next steps.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that motion? I had a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I seconded it. Oh, yes, right.
Seconded by Commissioner, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And what about including the B study for beach park recreation facility?
Samantha, did I understand you that those things do need to show up on our work plan, so they will be there?
Yes, they will be there.
Which ones?
The two bottom ones.
As well as the other.
I'll make a motion that we include the two staff proposing.
I'll make a motion that we include the two staff proposed items.
Let's say it's that.
Motion by Dow, second by Ambrose. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just to review, so C and D is our work plan item in policy and procedure and F.
C, D, and F.
And then when the staff proposed both of those, gives us total five.
And then I think we had two from the first page.
Under maintenance?
Yes, we do.
I'm kind of struggling with the workout equipment because, I mean, somewhere we will have to pay for that kind of thing and I don't think we have it.
Well, we have to pay for all of these, even B, said our director. But if we discuss it and find out how we can subcommittee and link in with other people from other organizations, that might help out.
Okay, so we get C and D. I think we should make a motion.
No, it's B and D.
B and D.
B and D. B, we can dog. B and D. Now C.
That's correct.
So under maintenance and operations, we're going to work for B and D. And why don't we just roll in capital projects? We want to do capital projects?
If you found anything that you could put on the work plan.
Were we going to put C in as a watch? Redevelopment repairs of the multi-griffes field at San Bernardino? I thought somebody brought that up.
I did.
I would, I would approve that.
Well, wait a minute. This whole section, I thought we walked through and as capital projects, none of those are funded for the next year.
No, but I.
Isn't that what I understood?
Yeah, but I think.
That's what I understand also, Chair, and I think that the only thing that we could do is discuss feasibility.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
I was thinking like on, on F, you could do a, the group could do a feasibility study and gather resident input about developing a community garden, that type of thing. Instead of advanced planning, kind of, yeah. And even with G, it could be a feasibility of converting that bocce ball court over and just, you know, do those feasibility samples to get input from residents and so forth. And then it'd have to be moved forward to the capital plan for budget approval and so forth, but it could just be feasibility studies.
So that would be C, F, and G for feasibility.
I'm struggling with feasibility of repairing a field. It's, the problem there is drainage, right?
Excellent.
I also wanted to be mindful of staff time. We are limited on resources and staffing, so some of these are pretty big projects that you're looking to take off. We only have six meetings a year. So just be mindful of that as you're, you're going through this list as well. I want us to be successful in our efforts.
Yeah, what I would like to add is, since I'm on the fundraising subcommittee, for any of these projects that don't have funding, any commissioners who, who are interested in it can speak with me and, and we can find some fund, some funding for it possibly through donors.
Who is, who is with you on that committee right now?
Me and Jennifer. Okay, can we go back to maintenance and operations? I think we were kind of informally agreeing on B and D. Could somebody put a motion here to address what we want to do there?
So B and D, work.
And I thought it was.
Aye.
I believe that we approve B, D, and E as goals for BPNR for 2023 to 2024.
Furniture? P, furniture?
I had, no, B, D, and E, F.
No.
I thought, I thought we heard F was not a.
F's already in.
No, F, basketball courts.
Yeah, I think we eliminated that.
Did we? Oh, that's right. That's right, I'm sorry.
So it'll be B and D.
That was staff development. Thank you.
Okay.
So B.
I'm going to say Thor made a motion.
What do you got, Thor?
Do B and D. Is there a second?
Yes, also a good one.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Not capital, right? Feasibility capital?
Yeah, is there, is there anything there that somebody still wants to talk about?
Well, I think we should do the feasibility, W maintenance. I have a question about the capital budget. I know this is, Mr. Chairman?
What's on the capital projects I'm.
Well, I'm looking at the budget and there's a file and I know this is a little controversial, but Castle Monica improvements, Castle Monica painting and more Castle Monica, there's 500,000, 30,000, 150,000. They just had a fundraiser and raised several million dollars. So can, do we still have to fund these things while they have all that money? I mean, they just had a thing the other day. Allegedly, I was told, I don't, can't confirm the figures, about $8 million floating around.
That 8 million was the city providing that, for shoring up the hillside.
Okay, but then what about the fundraiser that they just had? That they had last Saturday? I, I, I'm just, I don't want to cause a problem, but.
Okay, we're sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but we're being off topic. We're not talking about cost of management. Can we focus on the work plan, please?
Okay. So if there's any commissioner who, who is really adamant about a feasibility study for a capital project development, I would consider supporting that, but if not, I think maybe move on.
So what are the considerations? C, F, and G? The feasibility.
Just one thing if we're taking on too many things.
Yeah.
I would concur. Yeah, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven right now. I think that's enough, in my opinion.
So I'll, so I'll move, if we close this discussion with the set I have now.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 What were the, pardon me, if we just don't have, on policy and procedures, would we choose some of those?
Yeah, let me, let me go over briefly. Maintenance and operation, B and D. Nothing under capital. Policy and procedures, C, D, and F. And staff proposed items, the two items there.
Okay. Thank you. There's only one other thing left on the agenda. Somebody would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to the chairman.
What's the old business?
Where's the special meeting so we don't have to run?
Return to regular meeting of the Beaches Park and Recreation Commission on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 at 6:00 PM at City Hall Consultative located at 910 Cali Adocio, San Benny, 92673. Want to second that agenda?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Susan. All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's do that again.
Wow. Thank you very much.
Overstepping.
Oh, God, I'm so sorry. Chairman, your horse.
He needs a ride.
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to say. No, work plans are always tricky, right? I think they are, they're the things that you take a deep dive into rather than just give direction to staff and, but they're always fuzzy, right?
Yeah.
You guys will stay busy regardless. It doesn't matter what's on your work plan, you'll be busy. So appreciate what you're going to do.
Thank you, Madam.
We want to and write it the right time.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, ADA is just something we just want, we just have, we need to get on immediately.
You have to have, I can tell you, I saw somebody get put in a black and white because down in downtown Los Angeles in our hotel, I mean, I know that anecdote, because he didn't have a program. They basically said, we're not going to bother. And so what happened was, finally, the city came in and go, we're not going to let you off the hook.
It's serious stuff.
So you have to have a process. If you have a process.
Yeah.
You know, we got all these ambulance chasing, okay? They're all over the place. They love to go to the San Antonio. I mentioned that bathroom.
It's already been done. It's already been done by the consultant.
Yeah, our consultant already has done that and we have things that we need to fix immediately.
Well, you just have to put it in a process. So if you do this two years, we could do this.
No, it's already been, actually, it's already been a complaint with the Department of Justice and it got escalated to the Department of the Interior. And I'm the one that did that. And so the ADA compliance transition plan has not been updated since 2010 and 2011, per Hannah Thoridall, who is the ADA compliance officer. So you can't just keep.
What's the program? Compliance is what, what are they doing? Are they, are they having programs?
They have a transition plan, which has not been updated.
We haven't implemented it.
Correct.
Have they actually done anything, both of them?
No, not since 2010 or 2011.
It absolutely is. I just, that's why I'm saying.
Well, the technical.
I'm going to make it, I'm going to absolutely.
Well, it's taken a lot. It's taken, yeah.
You know, I hate to say it, a lot of this is, I mean, I favor.
Right.
Feasibility, ADA. But a lot of this is kind of, is showing that you have the facilities. That you actually have a plan and that you're doing something with it. Right. What do you have to do?
I actually just want to get, for the right reasons, I just want to make all of our facilities accessible, not just to meet the plan, I think, for our residents, those that need access to the beach on the mission.
We have the exception, for instance, a lot of our bathrooms, for example, we don't have five-foot yardage, okay? Then we have water impact. So what you do is you do the best you can. No one is ever going to tell you the availability.
No, there's a, there's a combination. We have, we have.
Take care.